The council meeting is called to order at 6:00 p.m. Present, our council president, Chris Fashon, council member Kevin Jabino, council member Clark Curtis, council member Rick Alfred Chase, our treasurer, city clerk James Johnson, city manager Jonathan Delabere, our police chief Travis Fingham, zoning administrator Frank Cheney, our fire department interim chief Kevin Koss, and anybody else here from the fire department yet? Ah, there you are. Okay. And in car line, our rect directors online, Michael Brown, and our superintendent of streets, Tom Burney is here. Everybody else, and all my friends. Good? Okay, if I, if you want, get after. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is additions and additions to the agenda. Council President Fashon.
Number one.
Council Member Jabino.
Thank you.
Council Member Curtis.
Thank you.
Council Member Chase.
Thank you.
Treasurer Johnson.
Well.
City manager.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The regular meeting minutes of October 21, 2024, our special meeting minutes of October 28, 2024, our accounts payable warrants of October 25, 2024, our payroll warrants of October 31, 2024, and our liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special event permits. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated in the agenda?
So.
I have a motion during the second.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is our extra mile heroes proclamation with an anticipated vote. So to begin, I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas Newport, Vermont is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Newport, Vermont is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Newport, Vermont is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift fellow members of their community. And whereas Newport, Vermont acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day, which is on November 1, 2024. So now, therefore, I, the mayor of Newport, Vermont, to hereby proclaim November 1, 2024 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge everyone in the community to take time to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all of those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Sign the mayor of Newport, Vermont, Linda Joy Sullivan, and this will also be signed by our council members. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you. It's the only acknowledgement I ever get is like. So now that we have approved the proclamation.
One.
So now that we have approved the proclamation, and it is being signed by all of the council members, I am actually going to turn it, this over to our president, Chris Fashon, so that he can now make announcements, and we can then have our police chief, Travis Fingham, come forward and, take it from there, the show's all yours.
So Extra Mile Day celebrates the past year. We each have, create positive change in families, organizations, communities, and ourselves when we go the extra mile. And a day to clap for individuals and organizations who are going the extra mile in volunteerism and service to make the world a better, make the world a bit better for the rest of us. So here is the first group. It's the Military Funeral with Honors team from American Legion Post 23, which I believe we have here today.
And if you could rise, please rise.
All right, do you want to call them up?
Yes.
So we have one for the Legion itself.
So first, if somebody can come up, and police chief, you have one for the Legion itself.
Yep.
So who would like to accept it on behalf of Legion?
There you are, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait, photo, photo. You have to take a high.
Yeah, wait, you know, come on, guys. Two handsome guys at all at the same time. Whoa.
Very nice.
So what's in the background? They're good looking, too.
Where's that gotten the picture?
I'd like to recognize the individuals on this list. If I missed anybody, please let us know, and we'll get those printed out as well. Richard Ratchard.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Picture, photo, smile.
Rich.
I can't get along with that, though.
We have Roger Gangwell.
Roger.
Thank you, sir.
Paul is our post commander. He's the one that keeps us together.
I want to thank the city council for acknowledging us. Thank you very much. It's appreciated. I didn't come to, I don't have any kind of speech, but I wanted to.
Well, then I better cancel tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're appreciating you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leon Jowowski.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Very much appreciated. There we go. As the adjutant, I'm going to just say a few words if it's okay.
Sure, absolutely.
This group of men that I am honored to be with, I, I've been with them now for about 10 years, all of them. We've done over 200 military funerals in those 10 years together, and we believe that no veteran should not get their just dues military funerals. And these are some of the greatest people that you can talk to. They reach out all the time, and they are true pillars of the communities around here.
Here, here.
Bill Smith.
That was a handshake.
It was. Jim Rell.
Not here.
It's okay.
We have Barbara Bell.
She's not here.
And Ed Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Wouldn't you like to take a picture of them all? Maybe you all could come and stand in front of the council table so that the press could get a picture of you all. That's because you have to clap.
I was trying to get over the picture. Don't you see that?
Team shift.
We also have one person in the back who's not here, Robert. All right. He's sort of disabled right now, but he also helps us out whenever he can.
Do you want to get up there?
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, Robert. Do you want to come on up?
I'll be your board. Why, you walk or?
Nah, I can go short distances.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so darned. Oh, we're going to let you do that.
Take the look.
So don't go away. Thank you.
Just to give you a sense of what it takes to do this, we've done a minimal number of funerals this year, 25. Each funeral takes about 30 hours of labor to put it together, to have the team, and to work with the family. We've done a lot more social work with the families recently. On many occasions, we conduct the entire funeral because of cost considerations. Families just can't afford it. We've gone so far as to set gravestones. This is a wonderful group of gentlemen and ladies. I'm the coordinator of the group, but believe me, everybody contributes, and everybody is well worthy of this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Sarah was not able to make it tonight, but Sarah Chabra, who has lived in the revitalization of Newport downtown development, she's put in countless hours as president of the board of directors over the last two years and has presided over the development of a highly effective board that is bold in all the right movement and cautious and thoughtful in equal measures. All right, next, we have Amy Lesby.
Is Amy here?
One of her most important projects is the overdose awareness project. You might see those flags on the bottom of these Main Street every year. For the last several years, Amy has done this alone, minus help from children. This event occurs on August 31st, which is overdose awareness day, and it's always a way to, it's a way to humanize people who died from overdoses. And lastly, we have John Aldridge, who's the director of MSEC.
So please, sir.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you. I won't hang ladies for now, or actually, I'll be interviewed. Thanks, dude.
There we go. So I'd like to say to everybody, so well served, amazing people. And so, going the extra mile, unselfish, caring, patience, love, you are those volunteers who do not always have the time, but you absolutely have the heart. So we, as a council, and everybody in Newport, thanks you for being the ones that reflect Next on our agenda is our floating classroom presentation. Come on up.
We got the opportunity.
Nice to meet you, too. Thanks.
Chased everyone away.
Yeah, you know, what does that say?
That's all right. Thank you. All right. My name is Douglas Coots. I've met many of you. It's my third time now before the council. Many of you are new since the first time, second time, and we thought it was a good opportunity to give an update on where we're at with our floating classroom and the education work with the Northern Star. So just to make sure everyone's on the same page to begin with, we all started in 2016. Memphrogal Community Maritime, MCM, is what we call ourselves. We convinced the folks that ours at be to keep the boat here on the lake and run it as a nonprofit, which is what we've been doing since 2021. And I'm here to talk about the floating classroom part. But just to mention that our chairman of the board is here, Dave Converse, and one of our board members, Felicia. All right. To remind everyone, again, the watershed, we have a very unique watershed here, and we share it with the lake with Canada, of course. Most of the watershed is in Vermont, but most of the lake is up there, and most importantly, it's the drinking water source for 200,000 people on the Canadian side. No one drinks the water on this side. I mention that because it's just a way of focusing everyone. So we're community-based, we're in Newport, because Newport is the jewel and the crown for the Northeast Kingdom, and we're a small nonprofit trying to run this education program. Next. Now, the big news is, you've met John, there's Emily, and we have an AmeriCorps volunteer coming. Emily Sims has also just come. She has a master's degree in environmental science from Delaware. Again, more of the young people coming into our community here, and there's nothing like paid staff, believe me. Volunteers are great, but paid staff, we get things done. And so we have taken off in a major way this, this past season. We're in the middle of launching a new website, working on financial models to sustain this model as we go forward. John? So education programs. There's Captain Robbie, who you all know. The grade served for this past season, 3rd to 8th grade, 462 students, 18 schools in the Northeast Kingdom, 17 cruise programs, in-school programs, 16, and gateway programs were 12. So just to give you an idea of what this means when we say classroom programs, owning classrooms, John has, has designed a whole model where he goes into the classroom first off and kind of gets everyone on board as to what it's going to be when he gets onto the boat. Then we have the floating classroom part. It's a floating science laboratory. The whole idea is to get our students involved with age-appropriate experiments with the water, water quality, and the rest of it, to understand how it, how, how the lake works. And then he does a debrief inside afterwards. That's the gateway lessons that we talk about. They learn about leave no trace, basically their role in keeping the watershed proper. And then we have a river aspect of it, where they then go to local riparian zones. We started that program with Coventry a few years ago on the Black River, where they do a similar program on the, from the floating classroom on the river at their school and learn about how that river affects the lake and the watershed. These are the schools that we served this season. Troy Derby, Newport, Barton, Orleans, and Coventry. We work with the Watershed Association, Memphrogal Watershed Association. They help us with the younger kids, and also we have a partnership with the Northwoods Stewardship Center. We started, also, there was a STEM fair at Vermont, what is it, Vermont now, Linden State, used to be Linden State, what's that state?
Vermont State University.
University, that's right. And these various schools mentioned at the bottom have been involved. You'll see many high schools there, too, because that's our plan, is to expand under the high school levels. And then 2018 to last year, these were the schools that we, we supported. The idea is we're trying to build a relationship, so as the kids move on to various grades and move up, we'll have similar programs that will complement each other. That's the whole idea. And of course, COVID threw a wrench into the, to the works on that one, too, so we weren't able to do as much. But this, this, this season was just very, very successful. John? So trends. Short sailing season, I think the last time I was here, I mentioned that so many schools were asking us if we could do something year-round, the idea that the sailing season's great, but it's short, these are strong kids, right? They can bundle up, and we can do this inside, much of it, and they can cut a hole in the ice, we could do a lot of the water quality that way. So we're, we're starting that program this fall, this, this academic year. The idea is that we'll be able to engage them that year-round, prepare them for the floating classrooms, and get the schools in Quebec involved as well. I'll come to that in a moment. Interesting aspect is that we've piloted now since COVID, Canadian cruises, so we go four hours, double the usual cruise time, up to just in front of the abbey and back. And I'm calling them sort of adult education courses. We don't market it that way, but we find that the people on that cruise, it's a Monday morning cruise, are very interested in the history, the ecology, the narrative, all that about the lake. And so we're developing that as a, as an adult education program. So the whole idea is that we see ourselves as a resource here in the community about all things environmental, and John has volunteered when he was for the Silver Equips, for example, he was down on the beach helping out, and a few other ones, a few other activities that I mentioned. So the whole idea is we're trying to center ourselves in that respect. John just began in, in March, Emily just began a couple weeks ago, so we're still in the infant stages here, but it's working. Education programs, then, the Gateway Center, the community events that then we support, and then the online access. This is where the new website's going to come in. They all, they all tie in together and complement each other. Partnerships overall, including here with, with the city, is that we see MSEC, so MSEC is Memphrogal Science and Education Center. We want you to use that, like, just like Echo, think of us as a little mini version of Echo. So MSEC, main anchor, not main anchor for downtown, bring folks in, keep them here, tourists, the rest of it. Partnership with Rubenstein Lab and UVM, Echo, the Rubenstein Lab and UVM, they've been the ones that have been providing all the support up until this season. And that's fine, but I've been trying to sustain this locally, so we have, we can depend on local resource, which is where the funding came in to, to hire John and, John and Emily. And that's worked out. So NWA, MCI is the Watershed Association on the Quebec side. They will, they will help us with the Quebec schools, with French language, Vermont Land Trust, and then in particular, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board have come in as, as a major partner now. And I'm a huge fan of the sailing school you all know about, and there's going to be an adaptive aspect of, of that program as well, and will help with indoor instruction at the gateway. So the idea then is, and I've talked about this at previous council meetings, is that we will eventually have the gateway as our version of Echo. And again, don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but it's not as big, but that type of thing, small version for Newport and for the Northeast Kingdom. And that will be our home base then for all these activities going forward, floating classroom and then the indoor program. The plan is, as I say, to develop a high school component as well. We're not quite, quite there yet for that. And the whole idea is that we feel that we need to invest in our youth here, because how else are they going to know what we have here? And they won't. They need to know that in order to preserve it. And that's our quote that we have in a banner many of you have seen in front of the parking lot down at the gateway, and I have it there in English and French both. So grants, money. Money's critical, is how we were able to fire, finally hire staff. Bernie has been remarkable, and he has, he organized the first congressional earmark for us, and once that happened, the money began to flow, because it wasn't just me running my mouth anymore, we were actually succeeding. So Bernie's been, been great with that support for the learning center equipment, staff costs, education materials, the housing board I mentioned. This funding has come from Senator Leahy's last year. It was a congressional earmark that went to the region, and it's being administered by the housing board, and we've been able to benefit from that. And they're funding our AmeriCorps volunteer, who we hope to start pretty soon. And then the other folks that have helped, the Vermont Community Foundation, the Better Places Grant. We raised $20,000 in the community, and then it was doubled, $40,000 by the state. And that's where we're, that's how we're funding many of the exhibits that we're, that we're planning on. And also, I just have to acknowledge, when I first came here a couple years back, and I made my spiel, Mike Welch, was it, from the NCIC, there was a grant the city had, and you all funded a roadmap. And we had Adam Kane, who many of you know is the director of the Fairbanks Museum in St. John's Bay, and he was brought up here then to help us put this all together, sort of a plan for the future, which we're now implementing. Very helpful, and I thank you for that. John? So last slide. These are our goals for next year going forward. A high school curriculum, the number of schools have asked us to get started there. Quebec program, many of you know, many more schools on that side than on this side. We met, Amy and I met with the principal at the French medium school, and Stan said we're going to start there because it's close, the English medium school and the French medium school. We both also met with the Border Patrol on both sides. So it's going to be a while, because there's a lot of issues we need to contend with, but it's all good. They're all positive, it's just getting through them. Titans, passports, birth certificates, all this, so we're working on that. But the municipal government in Megot, which handles the whole side of that lake, is very supportive, and they hope to help us with funding as well. But the whole idea is to make this a program for the entire watershed, entire lake area. Newport here, Megot up at the other end. We're working on that. We plan to have these, these winter programs and teen programs on that. That'll all be a part of the, the indoor aspects of what, what we do. A soft launch then with our exhibits that we're working on for April next year. What else? We hope to increase the number of students involved. The word's getting out. Just picture for a moment, dinnertime on the days of floating classroom, kids come home with grandparents, kids, dad and mom sitting around the table, these kids talk about this. The word is getting out that this is a program of interest, and I think that helps a lot with the community to appreciate more what we're trying to do. And we're also trying to sustain this as much as we can financially and reach out to some of the larger. and reach out to some of the larger corporate donors, we hope, in the region. John, last slide. So, that's us. MSEC, think MSEC. It's the gateway I know, but upstairs is MSEC. And there it is in French. And the Northern Star, and the Magog Community Maritime. It's all together. So, thank you for your support. Thank you for your help. I've agreed to come back in the spring, and I'll talk about that, our actual plans, what we're going to do based on how it went in the winter. I hope then to have the whole Canadian side down and set. And we hope to have floating classrooms for the Quebec side too. What we have learned, just of interest, is that we can't do any of it on the water. We can't pick up any kids on the Canadian side, because we're not a seaport. We have to do everything over land. So, that we've learned. So, it's going to be buses coming in through Stansted to the gateway, and then we'll take the kids out that way. Questions, comments?
Any questions?
Just a comment. I was able to bring my sixth grader to Derby up to town. It was an amazing trip. They, much more interested in me just pointing at maps in my classroom, just getting out there, looking at experiences and actually learning from that. So, it was really awesome.
And Chris, we found so often, I think we talked about this, the kids get the life jacket on, they start walking on the dock, and they've never done this. They've never been out there. Many of our kids, you know the demographics better than I do. This doesn't happen. And then they get on the boat, sixty-five feet. That's so cool. And it's not just going around. They actually learn stuff on it. And it's just amazing to watch these kids and using it when they actually, they come alive.
So, I was going to say, I had the great opportunity of actually going on this floating classroom and walking around the different stations, and they were just amazing. As, you know, I got to rotate the stations, and they are brilliant, and they're so involved. They didn't even care when I felt like we were really mermaids out there.
Brilliant.
They realized, ah, she's just a mayor of this world. But really, they were like so engrossed. And the activities, the whole plan, everything that was done, it was tremendous. And you could see that this was an experience, they would never have this experience. And so, this is something that I look forward to having you come back and talking to us as you get a little bit more close to the plans.
Will do. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is ratification of water and sewer rate anticipated vote. May I please have a motion that the council ratify its October twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-four action to increase the water and sewer rates by eight percent for metered sewer, twenty-six percent for non-metered sewer, six percent for metered water, and six percent for non-metered water, with all increases effective as of November one, twenty-twenty-four. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment?
Just a clarification on the rates. Eight percent metered sewer, twenty-six percent non-metered sewer, and six percent.
Metered water and six percent for non-metered. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on our agenda is an open meeting law violation allegation with a potential vote. I would like to move that the council admit that the agenda item, quote, "financial discussion and tax rate," quote, as was listed on the agenda for the council's October twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-four special meeting, was not sufficiently specific to put the public on notice that the city's water and sewer rates were to be considered under that agenda item, and that the council's action on the water and sewer rates during that meeting violated the Vermont Open Meeting Law, and that the council hereby states that it has now cured said violation at this meeting. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any comment?
I made the motion.
I made the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is city council policy on water and sewer agenda items with a potential vote. I would like to move that whenever the council intends to consider an issue that falls under its jurisdiction over the city water and sewer systems, that the agenda item for such an issue shall include the phrase "water and sewer." I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the IT contract with Bolling Computing with an anticipated vote. See manager, are you going to run with this one?
I talked to Dennis this morning. This is a standard contract. He had sent both mayor and I an email that states he is working over the hours that are allotted. He is keeping track of the hours to date, but there were no changes in the hours going forward.
So, everybody has the contract. May I have a motion to approve the contract with Bolling Computing?
So.
The motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Comment?
I just want to say Dennis is phenomenal. We had a power outage here today, and within ten minutes, he was here helping Frank work on his issue. So, Dennis is just phenomenal.
Close.
I'm sorry.
He was also downstairs for an hour and a half, getting us back online. He was here within ten minutes of the blackout.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
He's extremely responsible. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I sign my acceptance. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Gardner Park VCDP grant financial commitment with an anticipated vote, and I'd like to recognize.
Good evening. My name is Carter Finnegan. I'm with the Northeastern Vermont Development Association. I'm helping Newport administer a grant for our Gardner Park improvements. So, today I've got a letter asking for signatures. This will support the city's commitments financially towards this project. VCDP requires a fifty percent match, but we are well above that, and we're in the good. We are in good standing. This just serves as a memo, and then includes supporting documents to those numbers that you see listed. So, that's kind of it. The numbers are the same. I double-checked them with current budget numbers. So, you might have seen them in the past, but this is just kind of what they're asking for.
So, Carter, are you good with a motion that asks for the council to authorize the commitment of financial resources letter? Would you want anything more specific right now?
No, that's excellent. I'm the most.
May I have a motion, please, to authorize the signing of the commitment of the financial resources that are dated November fourth, twenty-twenty-four?
So.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Gardner Park Playground Equipment Update, and I would like to recognize our Zoni Administrator, Fenchin.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, speak through the mayor. Everybody, okay. So, basically, about three and a half, three weeks ago, Mike Brown and I were asked to assist Carter in pulling some documentation together to allow her, she'd been working hard on soliciting some funds from this grant for the Gardner Park project. I'd run into a little bit of a slowdown. Wasn't that a good word for it? We ended up having a few meetings, and we ended up finding that there was an awful lot of work that needed to be done. It was actually quite significant, which was a little surprising, honestly. However, I will say that thanks to Carter and Mike primarily, they have accomplished almost all of this in two weeks. All right, we now have pretty much everything laid out. We have a few hurdles to get over, and we'll talk about that in a minute. However, it looks very much like we actually should be able to solicit some of these funds sooner rather than later, and there should be no difficulty again. I'm projecting at this point, but based on what we can see, I think that's a fair statement, don't you, Carter?
Absolutely.
Okay. Unfortunately, there are a few roadblocks, and I'm up here to tell you what they are. At least the primary one, which is permanent. Quite a few years ago, it was identified that there was permitting needed for this project. It was confirmed in some line items within the corrective action plan that the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation approved. We were somewhat surprised to identify these, and these permits, although a couple of them may not be necessary, were not acted upon. Okay? The primary issue stems from a requirement when you grade, excavate, or fill land in a special flood hazard area, you are required to get a conditional use permit for that development in a flood plain. That has to be, that can only be granted by a developmental review board hearing. Okay, now, this caveat to this, and this is where it gets a little complicated. State statute and our bylaws dictate that this application prior to going to the DRB, in other words, city of Newport can't administer or give out a zoning permit for building in a flood area without first submitting it to the state of Vermont for comment and approval. Once, they have thirty days. Once we submit them the application, it comes back to us. Assuming there are no changes, they have no recommended changes, it then goes to the DRB for consideration as it normally would. Okay, so, excuse me. So, obviously, we have done some of the project, and we did not have all the permits. Status, basically, at this particular point in time, I don't think it's all bad news. All right? I have, we confirmed this about a week ago. Took a long time to investigate it somewhat. You know, this has been a process over a four or five-year period, so we kind of waded through all of this documentation, sort of making sure that we did need these and that we didn't have them. We got final confirmation from the flood plain manager like just over a week ago. Since that time, there has been no further construction. I have advised that all construction should stop. There are good reasons for that until you have your appropriate permits in hand. Linda has supported that. I'm here to report. Where we at? I have engineering plans that need to be updated. They're still from two thousand and twenty-one. It then goes to the state. They have thirty days, and then it comes back to us. So, you're looking at eight weeks probably minimum before you should do any more. And I can go further if you wish.
I think, yeah, unless the council has any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Is there any danger to the portion of the project that's already been completed by waiting?
By waiting?
In other words, you know, as I walk my dog in that park all the time, I think I see plastic coating across a big portion of that park area now, right? Like, are we at risk of having some part of what we've done damaged?
Not according. I had a long talk with the stone environmental engineer, who actually is going to do our permit. That's the process. And she may want, if we don't do anything before winter, she is not at all concerned about any deterioration or losing of the work that we've done so far.
Thank you. Are there fines involved in having not pulled the permits?
My initial contact with the DRB chair, who actually I thought was going to be here tonight, and Sasha Pila, the flood plain manager, were positive. Okay? I do think that it's probably wise, once you know that you may have made an error, that you do not compound it by, after you've submitted the application, by continuing the work. Two, I think there's most, there's two other things that you need to consider here. And maybe the public does, because I think that they've been waiting a long time.
Yeah.
So, and I understand. If the flood plain manager has some comments or instruction, or if the DRB has some changes that they'd like to make, you certainly don't want to be digging up cement. Okay? And three, I talked at length to the city attorney about this, you know, and I have no indication that there's a violation at this particular point in time. However, if you, I advise not to push it, because you do have the, the violation could affect your enrollment in the National Fraud Insurance Program. And I do not believe there's any reason to take a chance with that, considering we're coming into winter.
Thank you.
And to that, if there are any issues, we'll do it from the other way. Nobody is hiding here. We'll be making.
I appreciate the way it's coming.
Any questions? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is city financials with a discussion. The first subcategory is the medical reimbursement policy. You have a sample of that medical policy in your packet. And the whole purpose of this is just a really quick update. So, you have that medical policy, and President Chris Vashon and the treasurer and myself have been looking at this policy, historical disbursements, and we are going to review this together and look to see that it's in alignment with the intent of this past policy. And then we will get back to you with any updates to the policy that need to take place. So, that is just a quick update. Okay? The next subcategory is the fire department budget update, and I would like to recognize our fire department, Andy Carmine, on its behalf. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not sure exactly what you want for an update, so. I dove into this last week after some reshuffling of duties. Based on what I received last week, we are at forty-three percent of our budget. That might be skewed a little bit low. Because a lot of these categories have zero expenditures, mainly the chief position, full-time chief position. So we don't know what's going to happen with that, but. Any luck? That is going to start to fill up. I don't know how specific you want me to get.
Well, we understand that part. But if you could kind of give us an update on equipment purchases, salaries, things like that, that you've become aware of when you go through that.
Sure, salaries for firefighters for the call force. We get paid per hour. When the tone goes off, we respond, we get paid. As of, we get paid quarterly. The first quarter, $12,408 was paid out, which is 50% of our budget. So if that continues to trend in that direction, then we will need to have another discussion. I can say that I think if you talk to anybody, they would say we're underpaid, given the.
Well, we're not talking to anybody.
Expertise we need to have in order to perform this service to the city. And we've done countless hours of training for free. And this is reflecting getting paid for training. And also, I believe, an increase in hourly rate.
So on that note, I do just want to bring it to everybody's attention here that our, you know, the statutes in our Charter, Chapter 7, Section 12, is very clear that compensation of all officers, servants, and employees of the city are fixed only by the city council. So the only authority to increase salaries or set them comes through the council. So when we're ready to look at that, that is how this is adjusted. And I think you're aware of that, because that's the process as it's always been. Usually, we do it through the budget. But if there are to be any increases whatsoever on anybody's salaries, it goes through the council. Keep going.
So continuing with that, yes, I think going forward, we all recognize that line item needs to decrease, but that is not what the budget is for this year.
Right, but we will be looking at all of that as well when we go through the actual budget process, which is coming up.
So as mentioned, all the benefits for full-time personnel are at a zero right now. Everything else, as far as insurance, utilities, appear to be on track, rated about 30 or 40%. Gear, we are currently over budget. We're at 131%, or 3,747 over budget.
Can you tell me, can you figure it out, tell the council why that might be?
Well, we got three new helmets, think five new pair of boots, two jackets, three pair of pants.
So what's your normal process there? Like, when you want to get gear, do you all sit down? Like, how does it usually, how has it worked in the past?
In the past, you have, it's a rotation. So if someone's gear is getting old and out of date, then theirs would get replaced. For newer members, we have old gear that they typically wear until they're fully trained, which is about 12 to 18 months for us. And if they need new gear at that point, then we would issue them new gear. We are fortunate enough to get a grant a few years ago to outfit everybody in new gear, which is great. So a lot of people have new stuff, newer stuff. Eventually, sometimes you might have to replace a pair of pants that got destroyed. Sometimes boots fail, but everybody's in pretty good shape at this point. But typically, it's a rotational process. We can never afford to outfit everybody at the same time, unless we got a grant.
And you said, like, new people coming on, they start out with the prior gear that you already have? And then they get to a certain level, and then they get the new gears?
Yeah, so we have a probationary period. Right now, we're working more on drilling that down to making it more of a milestone than a time period. So if they're reaching certain milestones, and we feel that they're ready to come on full-time and go into a burning building, then we can move that in front of 18 months. But typically, 12 to 18 months has been. That gives someone enough time to get certified with breathing apparatus, take the essentials classes, and go on enough calls to understand.
As well as decide if they'd like to continue.
Right, I mean, there are people who, after a couple of months, they decide it's not for them, which is fine. But that's typically why we don't buy gear for someone who wants to. Fire station repairs and maintenance and equipment, we're over budget there as well. Fire station equipment, we're over by $4,730. That, as far as I can tell, is for new lockers in the station.
When will they purchase? Do you know, if you could tell, you don't have, if you can.
Do you give me 30 seconds?
On the clock.
July 18th, 2024. Equipment, truck repair, maintenance, fire truck equipment. I'm kind of lumping that all together because these are one of our budget categories, aren't very clear. If I go through all of that, we have, of the 26,300 budgeted, we have spent all except $26. We do have some things coming up that need repairs and maintenance, so. I did find one line item for other equipment maintenance, for $4,000, that has a zero. So perhaps that should be where some of these go. For example, we have our air trailer in right now, getting repaired. That's just over $2,000. Our air bolt has its yearly preventative maintenance and repair. That hasn't been done yet, and engine tube needs exhaust repair. I don't have estimates on the air bolt or engine tube yet.
But you'll get those.
Yeah, we'll get those. And everything else seems to be on track, or a little bit over, or a little bit under, so. That's where we're at.
Okay, this was important, because we need to see where you're at with the budget, what happened, why there were increases, the timing of those increases, and what's going on. Council members, any questions?
I have a question. So it sounds to me like around, in terms of equipment in particular, and also, well, starting with equipment, we are at or near the total budget for the year, a quarter of the way through. Is that correct?
Correct. And if you go line item by line item, for equipment, we're over by 1673, so that's 123% of the budget. That's for new box lights, flashlights, halving bars.
Got it.
New york hooks.
So I guess, really, I'm aware that you just stepped into this a couple of weeks ago, and I guess I just want to ask if the officers have a plan for kind of looking at where we stand between now and the end of the year, and trying to understand what the other expenses are likely to be that we could come back and talk about at some point.
Yeah, so we're going to meet tomorrow, and we will discuss this. As far as the truck repair and maintenance, that's an unavoidable one. I mean, the city needs that apparatus in service. We can't really avoid that. Some of this equipment, you know, we'll see what we can do with it. Some of it, we haven't installed on the trucks yet.
So another question I have is, you may not be able to answer this, but thinking about the hourly, you know, the wage question, have there been an unusually high number of callouts in the first quarter of this year? Because it seems like we're pretty far out. We're not at budget there yet, right? We've spent about half our budget in the first four, four and a half months of the year.
First quarter.
First quarter, three months of the year. So have there, can you identify, is that because there have been an unusually high number of callouts? Or is it because we paid for training, we don't, that we often don't pay for?
Yeah, it's some stuff we typically don't pay for. For example, upgrades with that volunteer basis. Members that were paid for that. Training typically for us has been volunteer. But we have a weekend-long training that people are paid for. It's, I don't know how consistent it is. I'm only looking at snapshots. I can't really compare it to previous years, because I don't know. It's just been like an understanding that we've been called the best deal in town for many years, because for what our budget is and the hours we put in is not really equal. So it's hard for me to really say on that, because I don't know how much we spent last year. If I can look at the previous years, I can have a better comment on that.
And we will do that. And I will sit with you all and go through a lot of these issues that we've identified. And please remember that Kevin is your liaison now. So please feel free to reach out to Kevin to go through some of these, and Kevin will speak with me and we'll go through a lot of this, so.
Yeah, I think we need to figure some things out for.
Yeah, I agree with this. And then, of course, we're going to be working on the budget, so we'll look at that. But I will pull some of the old numbers as well. Any other questions? Kevin, any questions?
We do have one grant that Jonathan got. He said it came in at $20,000. He quoted, and he can speak right to this than I can, but the quote was 36 for the votes. So there's a 16,000 shortfall there, but I know he's reached out to some other grants to see what's available.
Okay, we'll get an update on all of that, and then we'll talk about it. This was very important, and I greatly appreciate it. And I know that you did, like, really dig into it. And I appreciate that, because the council needed to hear it, and you all needed to understand it. And I needed to understand why there were increases and why there was money spent. And now I understand, and that's why I want to be, once again, very clear that all compensation for officers, et cetera, goes through the council, and we will address what's needed. And any appropriate authorizations have been stopped, and we will be going forward appropriately with dealing with it, and make sure that we look at everything so that there's a fair assessment, and we can actually bring it in the budget, and we can all talk appropriately. Anything else, you're good? Thank you, thank you very much. That was very informative, really, thank you. Okay, the next category is the Recreation Department Budget Update. Oh, I apologize, wait, I'm sorry, my, wait. Yes, I apologize, I didn't see that.
That's okay. I just have one clarification I need. They said they're almost at or over budget for quarter for salaries, and I understand that they all have to be done at budget time through the council. Has there been any increases to salaries in the last five, six months?
Yes, so there was an authorization that did not go through the council. So that's what I said, that was stopped, and we'll be working on that. And then any other salaries we'll look at, and then we will face, look at those, and then appropriately put back through. And I haven't looked at the on-call yet ones, or those that were supposed to be volunteer, so we're first going to be looking at that. I have not done a deep dive into those yet.
And what about being over budget for expenditures? Equipment, have there been any unauthorized or unbudgeted expenditures, like the lockers? I mean, was that on the budget?
So on that note, that is exactly why I asked Mr. Carbine to look through this. And I, we're going to sit down, and the liaison, council member Charbonneau and I, and the team will actually look through those to see why they were authorized, when they were authorized, if that was what should have been authorized. I mean, we have them now, so they're here. And so, but now we need to figure out what we need to do to get appropriate money for repairs and the other issues that Mr. Carbine needs.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, Recreation Department Budget Update. Recreation Director, Michael Brown.
Hello, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, just a couple of things to note at this point in the fiscal year. There's nothing that stands out to me. Most of the operational expenses are front-loaded for the rec department, because at the beginning of the fiscal year, we have nearly four months of operation at Crowdy Beach and the harbor, as opposed to two months at the end of the fiscal year. So we spend most of our money at the beginning of the fiscal year. One thing to note, as we have remediation expenses, if you're going through and you look at Gardner Park, there's unbudgeted in the operational budget, remediation expense, about $69,000. Once the project, and that's going to be offset at the end, that's partly, mostly bond money that we voted for. That'll wash out in the end. So if you remove the remediation expenses, we fall about 46.6%. For the next couple of months, we'll be light on expenses, with pretty much just salaries until May, when we start gearing back up again. So May and June are our next two really big months, the end of the fiscal year. So that's right now.
Okay, council members, any questions? Well, I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sure.
Can I go back to medical reimbursement?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Just want to let the council know that this policy specifically mentions those on Medicare. I just happen to be the only one in the city on Medicare.
But you're not the only, but you weren't the only one in the city at the time. So always, prior, when this first came out, there were other people, I believe, who were on Medicare. I think, but that's what we're going to, we're going to check. So we're not, my only concern is that the intent is here, and I want to make sure that the intent is followed, as opposed to.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, well, I was going to review it.
Yeah, we're not even there yet.
Still be working 12 years after you get out of here.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, so don't, don't, like, focus. All this was just an update that said, this is what the policy is, and we're first going to look at it.
Oh, I want to know.
Just a little question.
Yeah. Apologize your question for public comment, okay? Because there was no vote here, so we're just a quick discussion. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Employee Valuations of City Official, Executive Session, 1 VSA Section 313A3. May I please have a motion to find that premature public general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the city council would pit the city at a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city's attorney-client privilege, 1 VSA Section 313A1F. Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. May I please have a motion to enter executive session? May I please have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services and invite the city attorney into the executive session pursuant to One VSA Section Three One Three A One F, and thereafter to invite the city manager to join the executive session. Have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you. We are now in executive session.
Only the hardy remain.
Yeah, ready? We're out of executive session. No action has been taken. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I thought you were gonna have him back in and throw us out.
Yeah. I always preserve my options. Sorry, I forgot. We're just in. Okay, we're, again, we're out of executive session. No action was taken. Okay, next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Okay, um, we're going to open the floor to public comment. Uh, members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. Thank you. So we are now on the agenda number fourteen. When your name is called, please speak into the microphone and state your name and residence or affiliation. Please remember, only speak when you are recognized. If you are recognized, please do not speak. Speak through the mayor, okay? And I'm going to ask the city manager to please set the timer. You will have two minutes at thirty seconds. Before the two minutes is up, you will hear that, but you will only have two minutes. Ms. Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins, if you can hear me, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can't see you. Oh, I think I might have my camera on. Thank you, Jeff Hopkins, Newport. Um, I have a couple of questions for the mayor, how we're doing on current dealing with the personnel policies. And I also want to know that if the vote on the water and sewer was taken and it was defective, then can that rate increase take effect on the date for the March billing, considering it had to be an effective raise before November first? And then, um, the other thing is, there might be a suggestion, if it is at all possible, it would be really, really great if we could get a standing link for those of us who zoom in to the council meetings. Every single time, you have to find the link in the agenda, which you then have to copy and post. It is not one you can hit because the agenda is not live. And then, uh, the other thing is, can we remember to change the slides when there's a presentation? Unfortunately, you might have seen the slides on the NSAC, um, presentation for those of us who were zooming in did not. And so, yeah, it's, um, Jonathan, we saw your computer. I'm sorry, mayor, can I talk to Jonathan?
No, you can speak through me.
Okay, um, what we saw on the screen was Jonathan's computer. We are, we are live only through Jonathan's screen. It says Jonathan's computer is showing the screen. And we did not see anything but the initial slide of NSAC presentation. I'm sure you can ask some of the other people who were on Zoom at that point, but, um, it's sort of an interesting little quirk. I put a note in the chat, but unfortunately, nobody read it. So that's all. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Scherlo?
Yeah, I'm Ann Scherlo from Newport. And sometimes I ask a lot of questions or make comments, but I would like to use this time to thank you incredibly for the kind of work that this council and this mayor have been doing for the last year and a half. I don't think it's said enough. And I really do appreciate it, even if I have questions or sound disgruntled at times. I think you are doing an incredible job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Latt?
No, I have nothing.
You don't want to reiterate what I mean? Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
And Councilmember Charbonneau, I'm gonna ask you if you will say for new business, do you want to hear the proclamation that you asked for?
Sure.
Okay, good. So if you all recall, um, we, the council went forward with a press conference regarding what was going on with the hospital issue. And Councilmember Charbonneau, and I thank him for that, suggested that the council bring forth a proclamation. And, um, I'm like going to read the proclamation that was requested, that the council is going to be formalizing and get out there. So, um, thank you, Councilmember Charbonneau, for bringing this up, the new business. Whereas, the Newport City Council is in opposition to a recent proposal made to the state by an outside private healthcare consulting firm that would effectively close our general care hospital in Newport and replace it with a mental institution. Whereas, the Newport City Council believes that the recommendation by the Oliver Wyman Consulting Firm is the product of a report that is fundamentally flawed and is based on incorrect data. Whereas, in its proposal that the state deprive the Northeast Kingdom residents of their only primary care hospital, it represents horrendous public policy. Whereas, it is just not the way Vermonters have set out to take care of our children, our retirees, and our families in need of medical care. And sadly, it is a proposal that, simply by its publication, will hinder our efforts to grow our local economy. Whereas, it will directly limit our ability to recruit and retain our medical professionals, our teachers, our firefighters, and municipal employees. It will discourage badly needed investment in our entire region. Whereas, the Newport City Council calls upon the administration, the governor, the Green Mountain Care Board, and the legislature to turn this proposal aside. It is bad public policy, and the proposal needs to be treated as, quote, dead on arrival, end quote. Whereas, the Newport City Council is forming a task force of citizens to work with the council to monitor the bills brought in legislature, the meetings of the administration, and the Green Mountain Care Board on issues pertaining to our Northeast Kingdom Hospital. And therefore, the Newport City Council proclaims that it will treat the appropriate delivery of our healthcare as one of our basic human rights and will continue to deliver the council's message by taking appropriate action and will not be complacent regarding the closure of, um, of our hospital. This will be, uh, sent to the administration and will be published. And I thank you for that, council member, because this was a fantastic idea.
Do we need to vote on it?
No, but we, everybody's already looked at it inside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Offie Chase?
One brief item. I'd just like to request time on the next agenda to have further and deeper conversation about the water and sewer budget in preparation for the budgeting process for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
City manager?
No, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Offie Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Oh, thanks.
City manager?
Oh, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular council? No, I cannot have one.
No.
I'll move seventeen.
You know.
Set the next date?
I'm gonna tell ya. Next item on the agenda is to not listen to the mayor on adjournment and set the next meeting, the regularly scheduled council meeting for November eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Now, may I have a motion? I have a motion to have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Now can I move to adjourn?
No, because I have to do, no, no. So can I have a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting at eight forty P M?
Yep.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it. The motion is carried, and I thank you all.